I'll call this meeting to order of the Brattleboro Planning Commission for Monday, October 15th, 2018. And I have no announcements. So let's approve-
I have one announcement.
Oh, very good.
For those of you that know Kate, she had a baby boy.
Oh.
On I think September 18th, Augustus. So you'll meet Kate at a future meeting.
That's great.
And also for the viewing public, want to welcome Tom to the planning commission, who was just appointed.
Thank you. Glad to be here.
All right. Tom, you listening?
Mosakowski.
Mosakowski. Very good. Let's look at these minutes, shall we?
We actually don't have a quorum for the minutes.
How many more do we need for the minute?
We need, we should still need four, but-
Ah, Tom.
And actually, were you at the last?
I was.
So not-
Ah, geez.
You were the only one at the last. Already?
Okay, so we can't-
It looks like it was a good meeting, though.
It was a good meeting.
It was good. Sorry I missed it.
All right. And there are no public to comment. So let's move right along into the potential land use regulation amendments.
All right. So I have given you at this meeting, because last meeting it didn't have page numbers on it. We've been talking about signs at a couple of meetings. And at the last meeting in September, we had invited Development Review Board members in to tell us what their concerns with, overall with the land use regulations were. And they were pretty heavily focused on signs. And then there was, so their comments had to do with looking for a little bit more flexibility for creative signs. They were also interested in what's called a vertical blade sign. So it's a sign that-
Those are the light things?
No, not the banners. No, not the-
I didn't bring James's letter with me. That was a good example.
He had a lot of examples-
Oh, here's, here's an example.
That were like from like Nashville, like the kind of come-
Yeah, the long signs.
Attached to the building, but they're still-
I have a drawing. So you pass it around. Maybe you see it better from here.
Oh, yeah.
So they hang, they hang usually perpendicular. This one's on a corner, so it's at a 45 degree angle. They're a little bit more maybe iconic or, you know, they can be internally lit sometimes.
They suit the timeframe than the downtown is.
Yeah. I mean, I think they work on block buildings. So blade signs are a type of projecting sign. But what the DRB found was they actually had somebody come forward wanting to do something like this. But we only allow eight square feet for a projecting sign, like per side of the panel. So, you know, a two by four or something like that. So they were looking for something that could accommodate these projecting signs. And they actually thought that they would be really useful down some of the alleys. So insight photography was one example. Their move, their new location is not right on the street in the downtown. And so they really wanted to be able to capture people walking by on the sidewalk so that they could see their building. And so they had a sign that was in this vertical orientation that they were, actually the DRB was not able to approve. So they've made adjustments and have a different sign that's been approved. But they've kind of thought, well, you know, this is, could be really nice. We have alleyways and stuff. It's kind of pedestrian scale.
You know, it's interesting, because the other thing that we talked about was those sandwich board signs.
Yep.
They both serve the same purpose, is directing people whose businesses are down a long alley.
Yep. We, I do have that in there. So as we go through this, I'll point out, I've, I've added a section on vertical blade signs. And then the other thing we needed to do was, there was a Supreme Court decision, Reed versus the City of Gilbert in Arizona, that talked about regulating non-commercial signs. So basically, they have to be content neutral. In other words, you cannot have one set of rules for political signs and another set of rules for event signs.
It's a free speech thing.
Yeah, it's a free speech issue. So I'll point it out in here. We'll go through it page by page. There's not too many changes, but show you how I propose to deal with that. Do you have a question?
It may be it'll get clarified as we go through.
Okay. So on this first page, and I'm sorry it's really light, but under 319(c)(5), you'll see that I've struck out, struck out except for a political sign or a portable sign. And that's, that's in response to that Supreme Court case. Because you can't have certain rules for some types of signs and not for others. So-
So this means that, that those signs that come up this time of year can't be put on any public property?
That's what we're saying. You can't put them on public property. No. You know, we might not enforce it, you know, for those election signs.
I thought there were-
But we're actually pretty good. Recently, we found that some, you know, there was a fair, a career fair, and they had signs on public property. And we took them off, because they didn't have permission to have them there.
But if they have permission from the town?
If they have permission from the town, that's one thing.
I thought there was a window that you could have political signs.
There might be a window. There's, there's probably inconsistencies between the state law and the federal law, to be honest.
Hmm.
I can look that up and see what the state law says.
The town like to say, any sign, any political sign, not have a preference to a certain party or person?
Well, this is, you can't have any sort of-
Right. That's a change.
But I remember from many a campaign that there was a certain timeframe that you could have political signs at.
In the public right of way? We generally don't allow them in the private way.
Oh.
And even on private-
I think this was on-
Town property.
On private property.
We do allow it on private property. We'll get there.
But for a certain timeframe. Is there a timeframe associated with it here?
No, we did not put a timeframe associated with it here.
Okay.
And I'm-
All right.
We can do that.
Um?
But we can limit number. We can do a timeframe. But we can't really call it a political sign.
Right.
So. Or it's best to not call it a political sign. On page two, under exempt signs, so this is, this is really kind of the, the section that deals with the Reed case. So the first one is just one that I've seen around. So if the town or the state requires the signs, then they're exempt. So it could be, you know, there's a road project going on or whatever. Those are exempt from a permit. Number three is where I consolidated, in the strikeout, you see special event signs, you see garage sale signs, and you see real estate or construction signs. So what, and those did, they all had time limits on it, and we can keep time limits if we want. But Brian and I kind of talked about it, and we decided to just allow for temporary signs that don't exceed six square feet in area. So a two by three sign, that covers real estate signs, that covers, you know, we've never regulated kind of either the political signs or the, you know, closed V Y, compost, you know, or friendly community. We've never regulated those signs. So this kind of covers that, too.
No matter who you are, we still, we're still glad you're our neighbor, kind of thing?
Yes. So those are kind of under the, you know, those continue to be allowed under there. We don't regulate that.
So where are they explicitly? So these do not require zoning permits?
They don't require permits.
So the ones, so this section three that was taken out is then being captured where?
Now, the, the three is allowed under, underlined, but-
Yeah.
The rest of it is crossed out.
Right. So four, five, and six-
The temporary signs, okay.
Are kind of put in to three. I mean, you know, the, the garage sale signs currently have, you know, it's four square feet in area. So yes, this is a little bit longer. You know, they allow, there's a time limitation, so not more than two days prior and 24 hours after. We don't really find a problem with those signs. And the thing, these are temporary signs, so they cannot have a permanent structure. So if we find that we're, it's being abused-
It'll just take it down.
We'll just, you know, rewrite the regulations and, you know, put the time back in. It's, it's not anything that we've had a problem with, that we've been vigilant about enforcing.
So the, the, the only reason you're doing this is because of this new law?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Yep. Okey dokey.
And then page three, on the very top, 11 is crossed out. So this was non-advertising decorative signs or banners on single-family or two-family residential property. I felt like it was not necessary, because it falls under three.
Very good.
It's, it's, yeah.
It falls under three?
Uh, that's three, the temporary signs.
Although, although not necessarily. Some people have little banners up on their houses, like little kitty cats and-
Stuff like that?
Stuff like that.
Yeah, or the flag of the earth, or-
Yeah, right.
Or the, those Buddhist prayer flags.
Yeah.
Okay.
And those are not necessarily temporary. I mean, people don't, they're not seasonal. You, you know what I'm talking about?
But they're not, but they're not built in a structure that's like-
Well, this one's not temporary, though. So-
I mean, I'm, it's, they're more ban, like banners. And they're not, they're, yeah. I mean, they're-
That's a good point.
They're flags.
And so this would be, yeah, so this is, I guess what I don't like about it is the single-family or two-family residential property. So we deal with businesses under seven flags for businesses. Although it's only an open flag, it's not the other kind of flags.
Right.
Well, like if you had a Black Lives Matter sign, that's not seasonal. You could have that all the time.
You're those like everyone's, you know, a neighbor?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that's, those are allowed under three. They're like the, they're like the long signs.
There's one particular house on Western Ave that has a kitty cat thingy, or maybe it's not Western Ave. Anyway, I, somewhere where I drive by fairly regularly, it's like a, you know, a little cutesy kitty cat in a basket thingy.
I'm a little crafty like that. I'd like to be able to decorate my house.
Actually, not, not, not sticking there again. I'm thinking about how my brother tried to pawn off a bunch of lawn flags, like for all the different holidays, and I said, no, thank you. But-
But I think, it's like, that becomes then the definition of, it's really a definition of temporary. Because like, even though that somebody might leave that up all the time, those flags are not, those things are made-
They're not durable. They're not gonna last forever.
They're not durable, right. It's not like a durable, permanent sign. It's, and you might switch it out seasonally, or it might get dirty, and you're gonna take it down and wash it. You know what I mean? So do you-
Yeah, but I don't think, if somebody leaves-
Why do we, why do we leave it gone?
Somebody leaves their tag sale sign up too long, and they get fined. And then their next door neighbor has their pussycat up there for a long, long period of time. And the neighbor comes and says, hey, wait a minute. Like-
I'll just make my garage sale sign more artistic, mixed up.
Right. And then we'll put a cat on it, that I can leave it up forever.
Well, why don't we leave this striked out? And if Sue finds that there's a need for it, we'll put it back.
Yeah. I hear what you're saying, that it's a flag and a banner, so it's different than a sign. I, there's, you know, a property close to here that actually has kind of the big flags, and I was kind of questioning it, and more like the wavy kind of flag banners.
Those awful things, yeah. They are. They ought to be a lot.
How about the people with the waving banners? I was looking into that, I was like, should we regulate those? Because they're annoying.
As are, I don't like the big flags, like that say-
The vape things.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, those should be, should do something about that.
How about just no cat sign?
Cats and baskets out.
All right. Let's move on for you.
Okay. So, page four.
Vertical blade sign.
Well, first, before we go there, let's look at 2B. And I'm, I'm actually not, I guess I didn't fix this, because I was gonna go back. So this has to do with the projecting or the hanging sign. So if you want a little guidance, you can look at, no, but I thought I passed out something that has this, but if you have, yes, it's that.
Yeah. We have this page.
Oh, wait, I thought it was the, I thought it showed the different types. So, no, okay.
Is that this thing?
Yes. But it's not exactly what I had thought, so I'll share this. So these are hanging or projecting signs. So, you know, they come out perpendicular to the wall.
Yeah.
That's the vertical blade.
Okay.
Okay. So these are allowed, actually in your, in that checklist, they are allowed in the, they're allowed in the urban center zoning district, the village center, the neighborhood center, also the service center, rural business industrial. So they're, they're allowed in a lot of different places. We are-
This, this number O, the projecting sign, is allowed?
Yeah.
All three.
Urban, center, village, neighborhood, mixed use.
Well, though, this I think is an error, though. I think this was put in, but no corresponding regulations went with this blades on.
Oh.
Anyway.
Because that's what we're trying to establish.
Yeah. So this is back to the regular projecting signs. And the comment from the DRB was that eight square feet is very small. I searched around to a lot of Vermont communities, bigger communities, Bennington, Montpelier, Burlington Church Street. They are all in the eight to nine square foot. Somebody was even smaller. Someone was six square feet. And I think the point is, these are not for, they're for people on the sidewalks. And what do they see? They're not meant to be really large signs.
Like a drive-by.
Yeah. I mean, although in the service center, I think they do.
So it would be like two feet wide by four feet long?
Yeah.
That's what you're talking about? Yeah.
You really wouldn't want it more than two feet.
Right.
Because to see projecting out from the wall, that's pretty far.
Yeah, that, that's probably two.
Yeah, you wouldn't want it any longer than that.
This is like 10, this would be like 10 square feet, just table-ish.
That's huge.
Yeah.
So I think eight square feet is, is reasonable. I think we should keep it at that.
The DRB was saying they wanted it.
Well, no, cer, some people in the DRB, they can't remember if it was the DRB.
I mean, we could move it up to 10.
Yeah, that would be bigger than that.
Provide a little bit more flexibility.
But, I mean, not to mention, you're walking under these signs, so you don't want this to be full game.
And like a snow and ice.
Right.
Right.
Like falling down on them from the roof and-
Yeah. So I didn't catch this earlier, but I proposed we, I mean, again, max, maybe max 10, but maybe eight. We can keep it at eight. Sure. I mean, we have-
I'm, I'm game to leave it at eight.
Yeah.
I think it's fine.
All right. Eight, we leave it at eight?
Eight.
And I think-
Both of them. I mean, I need to, I feel like I need to walk the streets with this new knowledge in mind, because, I mean, I saw the previous document about signs, but I-
Yeah.
Now I feel like I really know specific issues that were changing. And now I feel like I could walk downtown and think, oh, okay, that's, looks like that's three feet. Would 12 be like obtrusive?
Yeah. So then, as you get to this vertical blade sign, you have 20 square feet. But you need that because of the style of the sign?
Because it needs to be, yeah, it needs to be thinner. You know, it needs to be longer.
So you might have like a two foot by 10 foot long sign up the side of the building.
Right.
But if you went, like, like, how, how long do you suppose this table is? Because if it's two feet wide-
Like two feet by five feet.
So this is, this is 10 square feet.
Square feet.
I just can't imagine that you want a bigger sign than that.
Well, if you have a big building, like the Latches or something.
And the signs tie up.
And the signs tie up.
I mean, we don't actually have that many height, but really high.
Well, here's what, this is from Barry, and this is actually the same consultant that did our regulations. They have a blade sign in here. And they actually don't specify the height. They say that it happens to, the width has, is 24 inches max. So it's a two foot max width.
Two foot max.
And that way, you know, if it's, I don't know, I'm trying to think of a business by a long name. Whitestone or something, maybe it needs to be larger than-
A candle in the night.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't, I'm just trying to think. I mean, we don't have-
But that's an interesting way to skin the cat.
Mm-hmm. And there's still, you know, regulations, because if it gets too big, you know, they're only allowed a certain amount of sign area if it's building mounted. It's, so, you know, it's not gonna be, if, if they spend all their allotment on this vertical blade sign, that's all they have, they wouldn't have any other signage on the building.
Oh, I see. Okay.
So in a downtown building, they'd get, you can have two square feet per foot of building, or frontage, or tenant frontage. So I don't know, what's, what's a commercial unit on downtown, in downtown?
So it would be a mixture of a blade sign and then whatever sign is on their front door?
They can, yeah, as long as they fall within that total allotment.
Mm-hmm.
So if they go a blade sign, and it's a larger one, because it's a big business name, then-
Then they can't necessarily-
They have to choose. I like this thing with the two foot projection.
Yeah, the projection seems more important than the-
With the width, they're saying the width can't be more than 24 inches, two feet.
Does, does that amount of like sign service area allotment take into account the amount of sides of the building that are exposed to public ways?
It takes into account just the frontage. So what, just what faces on the sidewalk.
So corner lot would have two-
Or if a corner lot, like say you're a corner lot and you're on Main Street and Arch Street, that is a street. So Arch Street is frontage.
Mm-hmm.
If you're Sam's, yeah, if you're on Flat in Main, that's, but if you're just an alleyway, that wouldn't be considered frontage.
Hmm. Well, wait, so that if, if you're on an alleyway-
Only in alleyway.
And you don't have frontage-
How can, where are you gonna put the sign?
Then inside photography, being in an alleyway, doesn't have frontage, can't have a blade sign.
Do you get something for being a business?
Um, let me make sure I-
And can you put that blade sign on somebody else's business that's further out in the alley?
Right. So say there was like Sam's, and there's an alleyway, there's a business in the back Sam's. Can Sam's put a sign as a friendly neighbor on their business? To direct people to their neighborhood.
Well, it's the same business, so they're typically not separate, they're typically not separate-
The newest Eastman.
Buildings. It's usually just within the same unit. Or, you know, say Sam's building, they're leasing out space in the back that accesses via an alleyway or something like that.
Yeah, I just, I don't think we're getting our, achieving our result if alleys are-
If alleys don't have frontage, and that means you can't have the sign, then-
Right. I'm thinking of like the Wyndham Regional Commission, right? Their offices. They could have a sign. You know?
Yeah.
If they have a sign on the alley that's sticking out, but it's not their building, it's not their frontage. Well, actually, right there, the Hooker Dunham does have a sign on that, on that alley. I don't know how-
Yeah, but that's just like a, that's a building directory sign.
Well, there's that on the corner, but Hooker Dunham has something-
They do?
Hanging above their stairs downstairs.
I get the sense that Wyndham Regional Commission doesn't want people to know.
I didn't know it's here.
I'm just trying to think of the different alleys in town, and like what, what, how it might come into play. You know what I mean? Like if there's something in the back, like down Arch Street?
It says, building mounted sign area per foot of building slash tenant frontage. Building mounted sign area, building setback, greater than 200 feet from street. I'd have to check with Brian on how he's done that.
Yeah, because I think, what we're talking about is tenant frontage. So they must have some tenant frontage.
What exactly is tenant frontage?
How much they rent from the building owner, for their storefront.
Like their, their unit, the building may have road frontage, but their unit only has alley frontage.
Alley frontage. Maybe, maybe Brian does consider the alley the frontage, so.
Yeah, there's a certain amount of it.
If that would be the case, then we're back to projecting-
Two feet.
Two feet.
And not, not-
And not a length necessarily.
And not 20 square feet.
And not an overall area. We're just saying it cannot-
Right. We're gonna, yeah, we're gonna use them rather than this.
Okay.
Yeah, I think so, too.
The 20 square feet came, I, I looked around, a lot of them don't have vertical blade provisions. It was tough to find. Boston has 20 square feet, which is pretty big, but it's Boston. I mean, they're, they're taller buildings.
Right. You could do a four foot by like 15 foot blade on a building.
Yeah, New York has a 20 square.
I like how they call it a blade, because it does look like a skate.
And then there was, I went with a depth of six inches. That was, I saw six inches and I've seen 10 inches. Barry has a 10 inch depth, so.
Stacked letters are required.
Why do you require stacked letters?
What is there?
I want you to see side D.
I can imagine some creative possibilities that might not have stacked letters.
I did see a picture that didn't have stacked letters, where at the top was like, you know, some word, and then the main thing, and then something like that. So what I didn't want to see was, you know, using this vertical sign to get more, a bigger sign, and then-
If you wanna find something, come here, you're shitty designer.
But, but then after seeing a, a sign that actually did creatively have, I don't know what it was, like maybe it was the name of the restaurant, and it was like Italian food. You know, I was like, okay, that works. Maybe we don't want to require this stacked fronted, or stacked letter.
Yeah.
I mean, it could be should, it could be a should, where it's a guideline.
I would take that out, maybe with the assumption or hope that anyone that's designing a sign, you know, the limitation of like two feet-
That's very limiting.
Right? Like, yeah, I think-
Yep.
You would have to be a really crappy sign designer to come up with something like-
That's, I'm on top of page five.
Oh, cool. So the, the depth part, is that, what's the concern? That two, that more than six inches looks bad? Or it promotes like materials that are, you know, materials that are not like pleasing? Or just look bad?
I think it's just to keep it, yeah, so it doesn't look bad, so that it just keeps it slim.
Sometimes, though, I think if you have like a neon sign-
You need wider.
You'd need wider.
Well, Barry allows 10 inches, and they actually do allow, they, they do, they do allow backlit or halo lighting. They also allow luminous tube lettering, but only in conjunction with painted lettering. So, kind of confused. I think that must be, it must be painted, you know, you got the lighting behind the-
Well, because you could see it behind the- Well, because we allow, you'd allow a neon sign, right?
No.
No?
I don't think we do.
I'm imagining like what is-
I think we need to bring that up with the downtown master plan, sign lighting in the downtown. Right now, we don't allow, I don't think we allow any new internally lit signs in the downtown. I think the last one that maybe got in was Brattleboro Savings and Loan. Pretty much, if you look around, it's all downlit lighting. It's not internally lit.
Well, neon's externally lit.
Neon is external.
Isn't it? And you get the tube outside of the sign.
No, the sign is-
I don't think we allow it.
I mean, it's old fashioned, because, you know, the internally lit ones are newer technology.
Technically speaking, yeah, it would be external, but-
Which is probably this-
Because the bulbs are exposed to the air?
Yeah.
I'll abstain from the neon conversation, just because I have another question. But I have another question, which is what if someone was wanting to do something creative that would, was like a one foot by one foot by one foot, like a square or a cylinder? I mean, even thinking like a barber shop.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Like, that would violate the six inch.
Well, it would be ugly.
I don't know. You could, I mean, you could have like a carved, like 3D wooden thing, you know, that wouldn't necessarily be ugly.
Yeah, it could be, you know, politically incorrect. You could have like a wooden Indian or something.
Come on, people work with me.
We'll get to that after. I'll buy, I made that little quick. I know, I hear what you're saying. So it's not necessarily a two dimensional sign.
But, 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 I mean, we should be cautious about, I mean, we could do lots of really ugly things.
Or give people rope to hang themselves.
Yeah, but you could do a lot of really ugly things with a two dimensional sign. You know what I mean? You could do a lot of ugly things with a two by six by 10. So, you know, why limit the possible creativity? You know, because it just, it's like I could see- You know, 'cause it just, it's like I could see, I mean, you know, like our, the Connecticut River Conservancy sign, like we have like these fish. You know what I mean, like there's a lot of like interesting metal sculpture things that you might be able to do, or, I don't know, I just feel like...
Right, it's true.
I think in that case, I think it's going to, like I've seen as an example, like a teapot for a tea shop or something like that. But I think that maybe that would fall better under the distinctive signs.
Oh, there's a...
But let's not jump ahead, but let's keep that in mind.
But, can you have a distinctive sign that's in the form of a vertical blade or...
Yes, it's not, that is, that distinctive sign section is meant to give the DRB some leeway.
If there's somebody super cool and creative.
Yeah. So, lighting of sign, I don't, just to go back to that, um, I'm a little bit uncomfortable changing that as one of our quick and easy fix. I definitely think that with the Downtown Master Plan, it's worth talking about, um, how we light signs and whether we want lit signs in the downtown. You might have us...
And will have the downtown people weigh in on that?
Yeah, right now, there is a sign on the corner of High Street and Main Street, um, it's backlit, um, and I don't think it's...
It's the liver pills sign.
No, it's, um, it's a for lease sign, actually. I actually don't find it offensive, I think that when I'm standing on the corner and it's dark, it's at pedestrian level, it's like a poster. But it's, it's backlit with this technology, um, it's kind of a little bit neon around the edges, it's blue. You won't miss it.
Where, where is this?
It's at the corner, it's on the Brooks House, it's the corner of High and Main Street. I actually am fine with the sign, although I don't think it quite complies with our regulations.
So, that's an example of...
I can almost pull up what you were talking about.
It's a for lease sign and you don't, you don't see it during the day, it's because of the technology, the way it's lit. If you go down there tonight, if you drive by that, home that way, you'll see it. I think it kind of activates the street, actually, to give your pedestrians standing on the sidewalk waiting to cross it, it's wait, you know, wait. It brings some light, I could see it in alleyways, I can see it on some corner roads.
I'm just like, I'm like, you, you just drive around town noticing all kinds of little details.
That's a blessing and a curse, right? My, I've got my girls looking at stuff now too.
All right, yeah, so we'll leave the lights alone for now. I can't see what got added here in three, so it's not intentionally limited, but may be externally limited, C. So, you just changed the sub-section, okay.
So, these are all just references?
Oh, no, no, those are, those are hyperlinks, that's why. Yeah, they're blue, they're hyperlinks, that's why.
So, we're on page eight.
Page seven, page seven. So, this goes back to, if you want a larger temporary sign than the ones we're saying you don't need a permit for, you can still have these. So, this twelve was an existing section, I've just added those temporary signs that are not exempt in the first section and, you know.
Okay.
You can get a permit and you can have a bigger temporary sign. This applies to mostly businesses and churches having festivals and that want bigger signs.
Did you see that sign on South Street for that guy who's running for state rep in Guilford?
No.
There's a scaffolding up on the lawn, on South Street, with this big sign for this guy who's running, because his grandmother lives here. I'm sure it's not legal.
Uh, page eight, um, subsection, that little D up there, so this is the portable signs, the sandwich board signs. And as Liz had mentioned earlier, there was discussion of what if your business is down an alley, you know, can you still have a portable sign? This was kind of like a...
That's great.
If you're down there, it could be further than twelve feet. I think it's clear enough.
It makes sense.
Page nine, the crossed out four, that's a, um, that's a read issue. Uh, we can't treat public and institutional uses different than the rest.
Well, now here we are in the distinctive signs.
Yeah, um, the top of...
What's on the top of the page now?
Oh, so, um, the DRB had an issue with, and particularly the zoning administrator, Brian, had a difficult time with the non-conforming signs. So, for Liz and Kathy, you may recall that when we got these land use regulations adopted, um, there was a name change at one of the big hotels, motels up on Putney Road. It's now Green Mountain, it used to be America's Best, it might be Ground, Green Mountain Inn. They were going to be required, they have one of the non-conforming signs in town, and they were gonna be required to, uh, downsize the sign. And they were very upset about that, and they came before the Select Board at the Select Board public hearings and were upset about that. And so, we made some changes, um, at the request of the Select Board and I guess feeling like we wanted the regulations to pass. Um, and we put in this provision. Brian's concern, and, you know, I share it with him, is that, um, this provision that I'm suggesting we strike allows a non-conformity to, um, exist forever. And it's not fair to other property owners that, you know, they can't, they can't ever increase their sign unless we change the regulations. So, this gets rid of that little exception, so, yes, you know, there's a cost to a business owner. In that case, they were no longer a franchise with America's Best, they were, they didn't get renewed or they chose not to renew and they still wanted the same amount of sign. I mean, zoning is to require conformance, and so you have to make provisions for non-conforming. But it didn't have to be that it can continue forever, which is basically what this allows. So, what, what it would go back to is saying, if you change the structure, if you change the sign, um...
You have to adhere to the new regulations.
You have to bring it into conformance.
So, this, does this mean that they're gonna have to go and conform?
No, they're still grandfathered. They're still grandfathered. I mean, if this passes and two years down the road, they wanna change the sign because it's a new name, yes, they need to conform. You're still allowed to do maintenance on the sign, it can, you know, that, that doesn't trigger it.
Okay, you need to, so under non-conforming signs, then there's not, you don't need the one, 'cause there's not a two.
Uh, there's one, and then two.
They've just been renumbered.
Yeah, they've been renumbered.
Otherwise, okay, okay.
Yeah. So, that's, that's the intent of that, we'll see what the interest is and...
So, distinctive signs.
Distinctive signs.
We made it.
So, this is new?
This is, uh, it was new in September with a little, um, E got changed a little bit, based on comments from the Planning Commission.
What's the definition?
I can't see it, I can't see it at all.
Distinctive signs?
There's not really, the purpose is to encourage unique visually interesting and creative signs that contribute to an identifiable distinctive high-quality built environment. So, these are, an applicant can seek a conditional use approval that do not conform to the standards of this section.
So, there's no dimension guidelines at all?
There is not, so there's, there's not a zoning district or a dimension.
So, you could have your barber shop poles and your fish and your cats and whatever you want.
So, this sign potentially allows, this section allows for any sort of sign at all, anywhere, as long as it's approved?
Yes, which scares me, so I think we should talk about where the, are there certain districts?
Strike all the rest of the whole chapter then, and just say it's recommendations and then put everything else to go through. But, I mean, no, I understand, like a lot of, a lot of, uh, like zoning or code rules have this sort of, like caveat, not caveat, I guess, but caveat at the end where there's...
Flexibility.
Flexibility.
But I think this might be too flexible.
Yeah.
How, how did you, where did you get the language for this?
Um, some of it was out of Barry but tweaked, because Barry's regulations were written by the person that...
So, this, this was, the, this is currently the law of the land?
No, this would be added.
Oh, they said something about September?
No.
Okay.
It was drafted.
We saw it in September.
Oh, very good.
I, I feel like though, I, I do like it in the sense, not that I've read the bottom sections, but the purpose and title that, I like it because, um, in the sense that maybe someone has this creative idea and they look through all this and they're just like, oh, man, I don't know if I can, if I can conform to that. But then they feel maybe encouraged, looking at this, to just approach Brian, right?
Uh, it would go before the Development Review Board, so they would submit an application, so...
And, and they might feel encouraged to go with their wacky or creative or out there idea and give it a shot.
Does the DRB say no?
Yes, they do.
And if I remember correctly, when we were working on the zoning, a lot of the requests of the DRB was more, was clarification, because they didn't wanna have to be in the position to not be able to point to something and say this or that, right? Where, so this then puts the onus on them to make some sort of essentially kind of subjective decision about the quality of...
It does, it is subjective, it's pretty subjective.
It's so subjective.
Yeah, if someone in the DRB doesn't like any of this, then they could just...
So, a couple of ideas, like we could, we could require that it meets the sign area, um, we could figure out, you know, is it the...
Is this more broad than what James was asking?
It is, actually, James did find this broader and thought that we should put some, some limitations on it.
What were the limitations that James had identified?
I think size.
Yeah. I think we should put a size and probably some sort of lighting control.
But reading A through E, I mean, if someone can come up with, you know, good, you know, a good report and case that matches all those...
Does it need to match all of these, though?
It does.
Okay.
I would put some sort of dimension and, yeah, some sort of like, I don't know, what do you put, like a candle foot?
Complements the building's design.
Well, and I...
Well, it could be the type of, yeah.
The three-dimensional quality. That seems...
That seems cat in a basket to me.
Do you think that one's tough because not everything would have three dimensions?
Yeah, exactly, exactly, I mean, if it has to be this.
I'm wondering if you, if you call back to the, um, what is the guidelines now? And you allow the distinctive to be a waiver of like one or two item, right? To allow for creativity, right? So, then it's basically falling within the guidelines, but allows for a specific, you know, so for instance, it's like, oh, we, we can't, we can't do the six inches, can, can we, we wanna do the square thing? So, the one thing they would be changing would be...
Would be the depth.
The depth, right, or maybe you're gonna do an octagon, so the one thing you need to be changing is we need to go more than two feet, right? But it's reasonable because it's, you know...
That's a good suggestion, you know, because then it's clear, like, there's one or two things that, within your sign, that you can...
And, and, and does this, does the DRB actually have to make a finding?
Yes.
That this is better than what would be under strict compliance?
No, that's not part of that.
Can we do that?
Yeah.
You have to make a finding that would be better than what is under...
That would be one of the review criteria. Sign criteria.
It's, it's, but it's still kind of subjective finding, because they are saying like, this is a better sign.
But, but that would prohibit somebody from saying, oh, you don't like this, what, what about under a distinctive sign? I mean, it has to be a positive, um, acknowledgement from the DRB that this is an alternative that's preferable for us.
As opposed to somebody just being lazy and saying it couldn't be bothered to meet the regulations.
And therefore here, and therefore here we are, we're under distinctive sign.
Makes sense.
Um, do we wanna do something about, like that would be an added review criteria, applicability would be your suggestion, like add that in about, you know, it's basically somehow I'd be like a waiver.
Like no more than two waivers.
Yeah. Um, do we wanna do something about that three-dimensional quality?
I would, I mean, I, I just think having to go through all of these things, I mean, I think, um, I like the idea of it can, you know, conforming or adding to or in some way helping with the architecture. That seems, that seems like it's less subjective, I mean, there actually are, you know, it's a style of architecture and if the style isn't consistent on the sign, then it is not gonna build on it, it'll just look ugly. Or could potentially look very creative and interesting, but that would be a one...
Subjective.
Yeah, um, but I don't necessarily know that we need all these other sorts of things. I mean, if it's mainly that we're looking for something creative and interesting, that it only asks for one waiver on the regulations? And that the DRB has to determine that it builds.
I like A a lot, I think, you know...
Yeah, A is good, I'd leave A and the rest of them.
I, you know, the, the question of street level architecture, that's definitely geared to more of the downtown. And I don't think, when we think about what James had in mind, I mean, he likes some, some of the signs that are higher up and extend over a building, I'm not saying that's where we need to go, but, um, James is the DRB chair.
But, you know, you don't want it to also be something that is like seen from the highway or something like that.
Right.
You want it to be at the, not necessarily pedestrian scale, but certainly not the highway scale.
Yeah, so, so maybe keep B and get rid of C, B a little...
Yeah, I'd get rid of C and I also, I think, and, and the building uses it in a manner that adds to the variety of the pedestrian experience, to me seems also really, really hard to try to figure out.
That one to me was, that was the insight sign, so, you know, you're a pedestrian and you're walking by this alley and you can't see it, so all of a sudden there's this lower blade sign that, you know, like, but maybe we don't need that now with blade signs, I don't know. So, that was kind of the pedestrian experience that I was thinking of, but I can see how it, I mean, I've got that one example in my mind, I don't have other examples.
Something really awful could add to the pedestrian experience.
You know, we're adding these, but I think, I think, I think a lot of these can be consolidated because they say the same thing.
Add to your pedestrian experience.
They say that it's a unique visual element that complements the building or the downtown, there's a lot of them that say the same thing. But when you get to D, it says, "We'll not use standard sign proportions, but will rather," that's where you can put in, you know, you can only get a variance from a couple of them.
Yeah, could do that there. But we have a meeting in like two weeks, so I can, I can play around with this one somewhere.
Great, just get it right.
So, although we've reviewed previous to this, is, is the idea that if, if a sign conforms to everything, um, in this, does it, does it meet most of those criteria? You know what I mean, to like to give...
No, not necessarily.
Okay.
I mean, they can come in without any thought of the designs, I guess it's kind of, yeah, I would say no.
So, okay.
Not without any thought of the design, but, you know, some signs are more attractive than others in mind.
So, as long as the sign meets the, meets measurements, it's, I'm just telling you, it can go up as long as it's the right size.
Yeah, and does it match, does it complement the building design?
No, we don't, I mean, most... We don't look at those things. It's, it's a wall sign, it's within the sign, um, you know, it's within the dimensions, it's the right kind of lighting and, yeah, you can have it.
And it's not, it's not...
T, R, people will say you're friggin'...
In gold letters.
Gold LeMay with flashing blinking lights and crazy men, yeah.
With orange hair.
With orange hair waving in the wind.
Yeah.
All right, are we good?
We're good on signs.
Flood, oh, flood hazard overlay. Okay, floods. F H O, sounds like an airport.
All right, I'm gonna compromise, I'm supposed to be around voices now, but I want to, I cannot leave at the special flood hazard area. So, I'll sit through this, but then I'm gonna ditch it.
Well, I think, a quick thing, I mean, 'cause we'll lose a forum, but that's okay. I actually think the Design Review Committee wants to come to the November meeting. They're gonna propose some changes, um, after working with it for a couple of years, so we can just sit tight on the design review stuff.
The design review, oh, yeah, okay.
So, we're just gonna do flood and then...
I can, but I can stay if you want to, if it's gonna like kill the forum, it's all right, it's not a big deal.
It's, it's okay. It's, it's okay. I mean, it's up to Liz, but she's the chair.
Madam Chair, may I have the excuse?
Say please. Okay, so, um, at the last meeting, I had talked a little bit about, well, let's go, just go to page three after that one, talk about the rest. So, um, residential structures. We currently do not allow any residential units in the floodway. So if you don't know what a floodway is, cause I get confused all the time, even though I should know it, it's the primary conveyance area of the channel's cross-section that is the natural conduit for floodwaters. So it's, it can be, um, you want to keep it open so that if floodwaters are flowing, they're not restricted and therefore causing more flooding downstream.
Yeah.
It's not the banks.
And the floodway is based on a standard, is it five, is it a hundred year?
No, the floodway is not. It's, it's what it takes to carry the floodwaters, like uninterrupted. So then you get the floodway fringe, which is sometimes referred to as the hundred-year flood. So Brattleboro does not allow any residential units to be developed in the floodway.
Thank you.
There was a reason that that happened. Um, I think it was not necessarily, there was probably some unintended consequences at the time, but I can tell you that another time. Just know you wanna get out of here. In the downtown, we have several big block buildings where they have foundations that are in the floodway. And the mapping in the downtown areas, you get, like, on the West Stone Brook, as you come off the, um, Connecticut River, has a lot of bedrock in that area, but yet it's mapped in the floodway. And so we-
So historically, people have built onto that bedrock.
Yeah.
And it's certainly a sound foundation, but it is in the floodway.
Right. And so these buildings are not allowed to have residential units in them because of our prohibition. Um, and there's some, there's some redevelopment opportunities where you might demolish a building that is currently, has its foundation in the floodway, um, and build a new building where the, any residential units would be way up high. But that would be considered a floodway building. And so we're proposing a change that would allow for residential occupancy above. So it couldn't be on the ground floor. So if you're talking about a Main Street building or, um, you know, that's, you're talking about several feet down, you know, maybe two stories down, that the foundation hits the floodway sitting on bedrock. So you'd be way up above, um, the ground story.
And so the engineering on that building would be, that it would be built on bedrock and that it would be flood-proofed?
That, well, first of all, so the, the National Flood Insurance Program does allow development in the floodway. Again, if, and, and we do in Brattleboro as long as it's not residential. But you have to do a H and H, um, study, which is a hydrologic and hydraulic study, um, to prove that you are not going to be, um, raising the level of the floodwaters downstream. Um, so if you can prove that, you are allowed to build a building there. We're just saying, in Brattleboro, we say it just can't be residential. And there's good reason. We have a lot of mobile homes and other homes in the western part of the town that are in the floodway. And that have been severely damaged because they're not, you know, they're not sitting on bedrock. They're not sitting on really strong building foundations. So this would just potentially open up some development opportunities in the downtown. So that's this proposal.
And is this ordered in a way to limit it only to that?
So C, um, says mixed-use block building. So we don't, the other thing is, we might have to define what a mixed-use block building is. Um, but I don't want it to just be, you know, a single-family home in the urban center, which you couldn't build anyway. Maybe allowed residential occupancy be, occupancy be, occupancy above the ground floor, provided they meet all applicable development standards and the building foundation shall be structurally sound and reinforced to withstand a base flood event. Um, and so that basically means you need an elevation certificate. You need to do the H and H, cause then you're into, uh, seven above-grade development within the floodways where it says that you need the H and H study. So all the rest of this applies. We're just creating a way to have upper flooring, floor residential use.
Is there potential there are people who want to be doing this? There are?
There is some interest.
Okay.
Um, for redevelopment. And there's other, like the Latches, the Wilder Building. There's, there's a couple in the downtown.
Right, like if the Latches wanted to kind of change what they do, they could actually then put in apartments up. Get rid of the hotel.
Yeah.
I think my mind right now is being badly colored, cause I just sat through the Great River Hydro Emergency Action Plan that showed the inundation maps.
Westminster is like underwater, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah. So, um, yeah, I don't know that I have like a very bad-
There's no point in planning this, what you're telling us is because we're all gonna be underwater.
It's only if the more dam goes, right? That's what I've heard.
Yeah, no, there's, I don't know. I didn't look at our, I didn't get to see ours and I was actually, do you, will you get it? You're not part of the emergency management.
I don't.
I mean, for one thing, whenever they, sorry, this is a segue, but what they built, they built an Esri website that is really powerful.
Yeah.
And so whoever Brattleboro's emergency management people are, should get a login. Like make a point to get a login from Great River Hydro, like ask for it if they didn't attend the meeting.
Okay, I'll find out tomorrow.
The term base flood matches up with, with what? The hundred year?
I think so.
Yeah.
You know, more interesting for me is this stuff about, um, residences and manufactured homes and so forth.
About...
Going back to C here, what if the flood goes above ground floor? Shouldn't, I mean, I, I think maybe I should say the allowed residential occupancy above, you know, base flood height. Maybe base flood never gets above any ground floor here.
Okay.
I don't know. Have you been to Wilmington?
Base flood in downtown, I don't think would, because they can control the dams on the Connecticut. So if it was flooding so bad, I don't think you'd find a base flood that, I'm trying to think on Flat Street.
But that's what we're protecting.
It'd be massive. I mean, it'd be scary. But yes, I, I can-
Yeah.
So what, tell us about the one foot to two feet. Why are we doing that?
Um, the reason we're doing that is because the state model suggests, um, that everybody go to two feet, in part because insurance rates decrease. And so the one foot is kind of the old National Flood Insurance Program standard, or the FEMA standard. But it doesn't, they've never really relooked at it where you're counting for accumulative development within the floodplain. And so we know there's a ton of development in the floodplain, so actually it's often a little bit higher. Um, and so the insurance rates now are giving you better breaks if you're two feet as opposed to one feet. So it is, it's building safer. The one area that it, it could be difficult is in the manufactured home parks. That, that could be difficult if you had damage and you want to rebuild, then all of a sudden you're, or, or if you're any house, if you got damaged and you want to rebuild, now you have to lift it.
Right.
Um, but, so, I mean, that gets to the safety.
I'm a little confused about this, uh, four section because A talks about the floodway and it references C. But what about B? Is B also in the floodway or is that just in the floodplain?
That's in the floodplain.
Okay, so maybe you move B away, so it goes just from A to C and then B will talk about the floodplain.
Okay.
And it's talking about buildings that are a hundred percent residential, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Just to make sure I understood.
Yeah.
And then is five the floodway or the floodplain?
Uh, five is flood, just general floodplain. So basically, all the development standards are together. You get some specific, if you flip the page and you see seven and eight are specific to floodways. So you have above-grade development within floodways. This is where it says you can do it.
Okay.
Um, if you do the H and H study. And then eight is, or if you're putting underground utilities in the floodway, it has to be, um, okay.
So in terms of, um, procedure, if we approve this, what happens then?
So in the end of this process, once we finish up with our changes, we will have public hearings.
Okay.
And then after that, the SLUC Board will have public hearings. And the SLUC Board is the one that ultimately decides.
Homes will be notified that this would, this is coming down the pipe today.
They'll only be, they won't be individually notified. They'll just be aware that the regulations in general are changing.
It's, I mean, I can, I wouldn't individually notify, but I'm gonna be working on a project with TriPark.
Yeah, well, that was what I was gonna say, presumably.
I mean, that's, that's kicking off real soon, so. They won't go unnoticed, un notified, at least the board won't. Okay.
All righty.
Yeah, so the two-foot kind of goes throughout. Um, and then on page five, um, this is if you have fully enclosed areas below the lowest floor. So this happens in a lot of, some of the residential structures that are in the floodplain. Um, you're actually not supposed to use any area that's below the base flood elevation for anything but, um, storage or parking vehicles, but-
So all your stuff can get wrecked?
Yes. But there's nobody living, you know, in a bedroom down there or-
Right.
Kind of stuff. So, um, this is something that was included in the state model that Brian thought would be good because he's really got no enforcement mechanism. You know, the, the property changes hands and if there's not something in the deed, then the next owner maybe doesn't know that they can't convert it, so.
Hurricane Sandy, I have fish in the dryer.
You have fish in the dryer?
Dead fish.
Little tiny dead fish.
Dead fish, they die.
Hydrated fish?
That's it. Um, we can do historic resource next time. I mean, I think, I, I think they might have some other changes, so.
All righty. And so when will the next meeting be?
The next meeting is, I think, November fifth.
November?
November fifth. Yeah.
Very good. All right. Anyone want to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Yes.
All in favor? Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Once again, welcome.
Thank you.
Always a pleasure.
What's our, what's our homework?